Regular Board. First, under announcements and presentations, I do need to announce that an executive session was held this evening, October 22nd. The board discussed personnel, real estate acquisition, and other matters involving attorney-client privilege. Next on our agenda, we have Ms. Sue Erdman with us this evening, I believe. Is Sue here? I don't see Sue. Any other representatives from the Simpson Library? If not, we might have to table that item. We can check on that for next month, perhaps? Okay. And then, yeah, with that, I'll invite you up. We have Township Manager Palmer give a few updates.
Thanks, Scott. Although we're going to follow the same format, there's a couple of other things I added to this this month's update. These are the financials. All of you will get a copy of that. We'll also post this on the website. So, September year-to-date, things continue to be strong. Obviously, it was our biggest year in commercial and also biggest year we ever seen in real estate transfer. So, in the next one. We used to have 23 projects on there. We're down to 12. Most of these are actually going to happen in 2026 or 2027, except the two bids up above. We'll have those bid awards happen in '25. So, lots of lots of good things happening here in the township. Again, we'll post this on the website so you can have a look at these. Scott. Grants, grant submissions, everybody here should realize, one, because there's no budget, there'll be no grants that are awarded, unfortunately, for now. And, two, we're being told that grants and grants in general are going to be more difficult to obtain money as we move forward. We do, we do have active conversations with our local representatives about all of these that have been applied for. But one of these, a couple of these are very key to our infrastructure, State and Texaco, and then Woods Drive. So, these are the current grants that we've submitted. Wanted to just give everybody a little bit of an update on the MS4. We had been going through, this would be our fourth, this was going to be our fourth announcement with regards to how we were going to view stormwater and impervious areas and the management of that in these developments. The way it was going to look is if, again, if you had to put a deck on, some of these decks would turn into major stormwater permits because the development itself had not provided itself enough, a large enough basin to, for the additional impervious. What we are going to do as a township, we're going to pause on that and we're going to shift over to some of the new criteria that we're hearing is coming, and it's called volume management objective, and it's to manage volume of water. We are actually going to put together, JJ's in the middle currently at HRG, to put together a capital improvement plan for us to go to the basins that we have and improve them and enhance them for additional water flow. So, we're going to start that in '26, and that's going to happen here in January, just to kick off the year. Couple of other things we've mentioned, our permit was submitted on time, actually early, so congrats to Jennifer for that. We added Joel, who's doing our operations out in the, out in the community. And then also, if you've been by some of the basins, they've gotten what I call a really good haircut. We've cleaned them up and we've cut them. So, just wanted to give everybody that quick update on the, on MS4. Couple court cases and land developments that are most imperative right now of the township. Trindle Spring Trade Center, we posted this morning a letter that we received from the court case on October 17th. It was a two-page summary. We did post it on the website. That came from the attorney that represents the township in the court case. So, that would be a good place to look as to what the summary is of, of that, that case that happened last Thursday. So, that has been posted and is on the website for your viewing. The Recycling Center/Plan Center Warehouse, that's got some current pending litigation. Also going to share that the Recycling Center, the New Kingstown, they're going to come in tomorrow and they want to have another conversation about the Recycling Center. I'm just going to share that with you, so you know. I don't have any details because it's not tomorrow and I don't know what they're going to say. But I want everybody to be aware that that conversation will take place, so I wanted to make sure everybody's aware. Third, the Texaco rezone. Everybody's aware that the township has approved an area to rezone. That's going to happen. We're going to advertise, get all the proper documents advertised, properties posted, et cetera. It'll be on the December PC agenda, and then we'll be at the December Board of Supervisors for a decision on the, on the rezone. And then the Data Warehouse Ordinance, Solicitor Schultz, based on what the feedback we received is in the process of getting that draft, we see that coming probably January of '26. So, those are the three, I call it the big three hot, four hot topics right now. I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Okay? Long, and it's been an arduous process, but DAP Lane Extension, I know you'll see on the consent agenda, we'll talk about that. They need to do some work on the 26th and 31st after-hours. All the three off-site road improvements that Costco was required to do has been completed. PennDOT did their walkthrough today. They have given them the green light that they've, they have passed all necessary things to have those roads available and open. They have a small punch list that they provided. That'll get done. But that's big news for us in regards to the enhanced roads that were fixed and completed. I did a couple of these things. I'm real excited here, and I want to make sure that people get a lot of credit here as the Public Works Roads Team and the Public Works Parks Team, led by Tyler Fairchild. We have a couple of exciting things happening. If you remember, I showed you this. This was the Hidden Creek Pickleball. If you go to the next one. And there it is as we speak. We'll end up getting the fencing done, may not get the paint down because of the weather, but we're going to have ourselves two pickleball courts down at Hidden Creek. We're very excited. Go to the next one. This is another project, was done at the Veterans Memorial, done, and everybody's aware of it, to make the ADA compliance and also to put some handicap parking. This was some of the work that was done in August, September. And then if we go to the next one, they have completed that project. Very excited that that is, that's ready to go. Very excited for the veterans and everybody that may need to use that to get up, but that handicap parking also is really great. So, very happy that we continue to do these, what I call really important additions to the Veterans Memorial to continue to enhance them. Go to the next one. Has anybody seen this? Some of us may know, some of us may not. Dollar Tree. They have a, they have a temporary CO right now, so we just, they haven't given us a date yet as to when they're going to open. I want everybody to be aware of that. What's really interesting, those who remember, that plaza was pretty empty, and that plaza now is all full, except the corner one that used to be Isaacs at one time. That's the only open space they have now in that Silver Spring Plaza. So, Dollar Tree is going to open here probably before the holidays, but no date yet. Thanks, Scott. I get more questions, believe it or not, about this. Well, not as much as I do Costco. What's going on in the Carlisle Pike? That is Raymore and Flanagan. Okay? So, that's Raymore and Flanagan. That's, that was taken Tuesday. That's where they stand right now. But that's the active construction site on the Carlisle Pike people have been asking. So, they, they have an aggressive timeline, but I'm not even going to quote what it is, but we'll just say that's where they are at this point. Okay? Wanted to talk a little bit about this. This was a, you're going to see, actually, they may have been on the news at 6 o'clock. It might even be on the news at 11:00, Channel 27 and some of the news stations. Pennsylvania School Safety Institute, they purchased the Boy Scout Building across the street, and they're going to expand from one building to two buildings. Actually, Chief, if you could just take a minute to share a little bit about, I think you should all hear a little bit more detail about what this building is, which is an add-on to what already exists in the township, right on Ben Creek. Chief?
Currently, it's located in the lower level of the Pennsylvania School Board Association Building, which is on further down Ben Creek Boulevard. It's a high-end, I believe they built it two years ago, at a cost of just over three-quarters of a million dollars. High-end simulator that they use for school safety, as well as school administrators. They have their own studio, so they can generate their own scenarios. It's 90% geared towards de-escalation, how staff should handle parents who are out, out of control, how they handle kids who are out of control, active shooters. And then they have some vehicle stops for officers as well, but geared towards school safety. It is not what anybody is thinking of. It's, most people, when they hear simulator for police, what you're thinking in your brain, no matter what you're thinking, is the Atari 2600 version. This is virtual reality. It is amazing. They have one that is 360 degrees. It is around you. You have to watch behind you, beside you. You move. They have school rooms set up. This facility that they're building is going to have a two-story garage feature for school buses, and which interests some of our specialty teams, state police, SRT, things like that for training purposes. And since they're located here in the township, they give our department access to it on the overnight hours, and we have taken advantage of it. It's beyond impressive how high-tech it is, and they change it all the time.
Yeah. It's used by anybody in the state that wants to utilize it for training, so we often get people from all over the state for the training. There's no substitute for this kind of training, unfortunately, in today's world, so we're really fortunate it's in our township. They had this celebration today to kick off the new building they're going to, they're going to build as part of this training.
Right now, 10:30, Costco is going to open with a 7:30 ribbon cutting. That's the latest we have. Don't see any change to that, so just letting everybody know. They're doing a bunch of ancillary things just to clean up around some punch list items. Fire, Fire and EMS will go around, I think, on the 28th. Yeah, 28th, we'll do the tour. A lot of people get a lot of credit, you know, how we've kind of overseen and managed this process, but that right now is the, I'd say that's a solid date, 10:30 it's going to open, so everybody's aware. Always report, so our next big event, we just had our Fall Festival, which we had a great turnout. And our next one's the Costume Crawl, which is next week, and then our Veterans Day Ceremony, and then our Winter's Night. And that'll round out all the events for the year. Again, I want to say to the board, I can't thank enough the staff that puts all this together and all the projects I mentioned. This doesn't do it enough, too, is what we do every day in terms of what we manage every day. So, I just want to make sure that all the staff are acknowledged for what they do. Thanks.
Thanks, Ray. All right, we'll go to public comment.
Thank you.
Thomas Miller. Sorry, I guess we need this. Good evening. I'm Thomas Miller. I wish to thank the board for the opportunity to address you. I live at 30 Nottingham Drive in Southfield Crossing. I'm here representing the members of the New Kingstown Vision Committee. At our September 11th meeting this year, our group unanimously voted to rescind a previous vote from June 2022 that was in favor of the proposed Plan Center over the proposed recycling plant development in the west end of the village in New Kingstown. After much discussion and learning more about these proposals, the New Kingstown Vision Committee has voted to oppose the applications made for the Plan Center, CU 2022-6, and the recycling facility, CU 2021-4, and all similar subsequent proposals. We feel that both applications are detrimental to the health and safety of the residents of New Kingstown and its surrounding areas, and will severely and negatively impact the character of our 200-year-old village. We therefore rescind the vote from around June 29th, 2022, taking on these issues as ill-informed at the time, and instead, vote to oppose the proposed center and recycling facility. The Vision Committee urges the Silver Spring Township Board of Supervisors to not deny both applications as inappropriate and/or not permitted. All members were present for this vote, and it was unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Other comment?
Mr. Boucher.
Clarence Boucher, 15, Org Circle in Southfield Crossing. Technology. I wasn't here for the last meeting, and I wasn't able to contact you because of the audio problems that you had, so I have a bit of a buildup here. But there's several significant issues I'd like to bring up. One about the industrial zone rewrite that we have going on, and the other, some suggestions for procedures within the township. Next. The first is considering the industrial zone amendments to incorporate the data center and warehouse conditions, which you've already tasked the, the staff to do at September's meeting. I'd also like to add the woodland buffer yard conditions. Remember, that's something we discussed back in January, and we decided that there were opportunities that that might be used. And I'm going to suggest that one of those opportunities now is in the I-2 zone, where you have large parcels and you have very disruptive operations that would be best mitigated with some of the provisions that we find in that condition, in those conditions. Those are things that you've already seen. They've already been vetted by the staff and by the supervisors. And so, I'm hoping it'd be pretty easy to roll it in to the considerations. Obviously, all of them won't be applicable, but I trust the staff to look at it again and decide where it might be useful. So, while the process still has time for change, I ask the supervisors to task the staff to consider incorporating parts of the woodland conditions in the industrial zone rewrite. Now, I'll turn it over to you, if you'd like to make that decision or not, and maybe cut my time.
Why don't you finish your comments, and then we could...
Okay. I'll be happy to do that, then. Next. The public may, well, the public now knows it because the Township Manager mentioned it, but the recycling plant is now active again. There was a new plant submitted on the 30th of September. The developers did not extend that timeline as they normally do. And so, it's a good possibility that in the next months, we'll be looking at a Plant Center Warehouse and/or a recycling plant coming up. That was after 17 time extensions that they've given us, and it doesn't, we don't know if there'll be an 18th one. So, I just wanted, I'm glad that the Township Manager brought it up. I'm bringing it up, not only because the public needs to know, but it also launches me to two other things I'm going to suggest. We can go to the, the next thing. The first is an irritant I've had for the past several years now, where basically the township accepts applications that are incomplete. Your zoning ordinance is very clear, 804A. It says you must submit four items with an application. And it's too common that we don't. And the recycling plant amended application doesn't have those items. It's missing the floor plan, the elevations, and it doesn't have an updated description because the, the plan is significantly changed. I would really like to see the staff starting to enforce that. And the example I'm going to give is, if you go back to the other project, the Plant Center Warehouse, which was submitted three years ago, and also lacked elevations and floor plan. Three years later, even though the township engineer put it in his comments, we still don't have them. So, that means when the planning commission, when you and when the public takes a look at these, what are we looking at? It's incomplete, and it's just unacceptable. And then the second problem I want to bring up is timeline extensions. There was a time, not very long ago, when the supervisors had a vote on conditional use timeline extensions. It would go into the minutes, and we'd have a way of tracking it. The 17th time, when the recycling facility came in, I didn't do that. The township, the township solicitor simply agreed to it, and that was fine. I'm told that legally, it doesn't need to be done, and I'm not going to argue that. But I think for transparency and for good governance, we need a way of tracking these timelines so we can go back and look at it. Because that's exactly what I did to, to figure out that, in fact, the supervisors had given the planning commission the recycling facility to look at, and that's what, that permission is what's going to be going on. So, those are the three things I wanted to bring up. I would like to see if you guys are willing to address any one of those three.
Thanks, Clarence. Any comments from the board on the woodland buffer?
How did, how did we leave it before?
You, you pretty much said, "Good idea. We don't know how to apply it yet, but there's probably going to be circumstances that..." Yeah, there are probably circumstances where it does, and I'm suggesting now that this is one of those circumstances.
Any other thoughts from the board on that?
I think it's a good idea. I, I mean, if we're incorporating other buffer, other type information setback into the I-2, why not incorporate this as well?
As appropriate. I'm not saying that it's all going to go in, because our, our thoughts at the time was, a lot of good ideas here, but, you know, may not fit all, all circumstances, and I understand that.
Well, what you provided to us, Clarence, was very thorough, very detailed. I'm sure we're not going to put all of that into the ordinance, but certainly, the concept of it is, is a very good idea.
Right, the concept of it. We, we're involved in a position to be wording things or...
One thing, Clarence, I was thinking about. Instead of like it being a set 500 feet, if you have a smaller site, so that we wouldn't be challenged, that we're maybe making the property, you know, devalued, but have a sliding scale, if it's a certain amount of acres, it's 500 feet off. Because if you have a smaller site, you're not going to have as intensive a use and have maybe a sliding scale with different setbacks. You know, maybe 250 for a certain acre. If you go below that, you know, maybe down to 200 or 150, and then have a cap, because I, the thing I worry about with the 500 is if we don't have a big enough site or the shape of it, you could almost make it to the point, it's not buildable.
And I agree, actually, with all that. I don't expect the staff to take everything I wrote and simply put it into the ordinance. I expect them to be using their own understanding. But I also, if you remember, when we discussed this, I referenced the Penn Future Model Ordinance, and that's exactly what they do. They have a sliding scale, but it's appropriate for this particular project because these lots tend to be much longer, much larger, and so they do lend themselves to this kind of setback and filling in with the woodland buffers and the other thing.
Yeah, I'm talking in aggregate, not just solely on this site, just in general, you know, in the, you know, potential someday there is more sites that are zoned out, which we don't know the future. It would be good to have that, so somebody wouldn't challenge it as saying, you know, that it's too restrictive and, and...
And remember, this was only between residences or sensitive receptors and the industrial zones, so it wouldn't apply to a lot of places.
Yeah, but I'm saying, where, yeah, where it would, I think you could have a sliding scale, because if you had the parcel, if there's multiple parcels that are industrial, when you get to that conflict point, I call it, that person that owns that lot's getting penalized. So, I think, like, if it's a smaller lot, I do agree that there needs to be some sort of transition zone. I just don't necessarily know. I think it would be based on the size and the amount of use.
What I am trying to avoid, though, is penalizing the residents...
No, I agree.
Who live next door, and someone comes in, builds something next to them, and I would like to give them that buffer and the mitigation of woodlands in there.
Chairman Mockler, if I, if I could, just to, to kind of help this conversation along. I took my, the, the task that was given to me to incorporate as much as what I could legally incorporate into, into the ordinance for Mr. Boucher's conditions, as including that. The draft of the, the data center ordinance that I had given you had included a buffer area in it, and I had discussed additionally with staff since then about, you know, making, managing the scale, that it would be appropriate to the scale of the development, much like Supervisor Lenker is, is discussing. So, I think we're going to have that worked, worked into it already.
So, it should be an easy process, then, just to take a look at the woodland buffers and say, yes, it's already been incorporated or hasn't?
Right, we're, we're incorporating that into the, into the ordinance.
John, that should eliminate us being challenged, like, if we would have, like I said, a site either due to the, the, the shape of it and/or the acreage, I think that would prevent us from being challenged.
Reduces variances, reduces variances. Yeah, so I know the zoning hearing board would, would appreciate not having to deal with variances that they shouldn't have to deal with.
Okay, thanks, Solicitor Schultz. Appreciate that. Clarence, can't really comment on the incomplete applications. We'll take that input and understand that more with staff. And then timeline extensions, I guess that's, again, discretion of the board, not legally required to move on that, right? As we understand from Solicitor Schultz, so perhaps there's a middle ground where we can at least report those timeline extensions?
My, my proposal wasn't legally based. It's administratively based. It's a way for the, the public to track the, the extensions, but also to go back historically, do research like I did and say, "Oh, yes, they did do this," or "No, they didn't do this," and actually have a way of proving that. We can't do that right now, at least with what's available, with the 17th time extension for the recycling facility, but I can do that for the first 16, and that was my point.
John, legally, we're required to keep giving time extensions, right? We can't at any point say, you know, if they're making a good faith effort, we have to keep, we have to gauge that it's a good faith effort, right?
That, that's exactly right, yeah.
Because I was told as long as they come, make a statement at the meeting, that that's a good faith effort, right?
Right, they have to show, they, they have to show that, or you'd have to show that there's bad faith in what they're doing. And that would be typically the cases that you see there are developer who's, you're getting comments from staff, from the engineer, and is not acting on them and is dragging it out. In those cases, you can, you can make a case that there's bad faith on part of the applicant. In a case like, like the, the, the extension that, that Mr. Boucher just, just mentioned for the recycling center, there's, there's been a second application on that that's pending in, in court right now, and that's why they've been extending the recycling center.
So, I, I wasn't trying to say we should deny the, the extensions. I'm just trying to track them.
Yeah, I just wanted, so the general public hears, because some people might not have that background. We were always told before that as long as they do a good faith effort, you know, we're kind of required to grant that.
I wonder, it, it, it also does spark some conversation when those types of extensions do come in before the board. Um, maybe we have some more discussions on what that process looks like.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing that says you, you can't have a motion on the agenda. Um, it's just that you're not required to. You drop it in the consent agenda, you could put it on part of the agenda that's just kind of reporting out that, you know, these extensions were granted in the last month, something like that.
Okay, yeah, those both sound decent.
Sean, I remember we had the, Nancy will remember this, the Whittler track, that was like on, ever since I was a supervisor in twenty ten, like it seemed like we kept extending that, like almost ten years till they ended up doing maybe even more before they started building over there. It was constant.
Okay.
But, but I need, for those kind of long range things, they need to be tracked so we don't, don't lose the, uh, the continuum. And you're understanding what went into it.
We got it. Thanks Clarence.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think you're up. Come on up.
Short and sweet, Glenn Haas Sellar. Uh, two things. Last month I had brought up about the sign being in a bad spot on one fourteen for the construction zone and it got moved and I think it really helped traffic. Um, and secondly, the New Kingston Fire Company regretfully announces the passing of sixty year active life member Roger Wagner. Um, he joined the fire company before I was born, so you know, um, probably a lot of people in this room don't even know him. He had, he's been sick for about a year. He passed away on Friday. He served in many positions throughout. Um, lastly, as one of our fire police officers, so his services were today. So I just wanted to make it, just want to make the board aware.
Great, thank you Glenn. Other comments? Mr. Duncan?
Randy Duncan, Green Ridge Road. Uh, just a couple of things regarding, uh, Clarence and the setbacks. It could be a percentage of what's being proposed and you know, percentage of the size of the structure that's being proposed, cause you could have a smaller structure, it doesn't utilize the whole parcel and, just ratio based rather than a specific amount. Uh, and I'd like to ask for, um, on the consent agenda, five D be, uh, set aside so we could talk about it.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, anything on lines go? All right, that'll take us then to consent agenda. We had a request for five D. Any other comments or requests on consent? If not, I'd also like to pull five B for a further discussion, so that would be five B and D, otherwise we could move on the remaining.
Motion to approve.
Move from Nancy, is there a second?
Second.
Laura, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any, that motion carries. Uh, I'll take five B if that's okay, just because it's in order, not as, as it was requested, but we'll come back to five D Randy. Um, I just have to ask the obvious question to the board. We know that there's been some specs that haven't met our requirements at Dap Lane. Rhetorically, does it then make sense to accelerate the completion, right? By allowing overnight work hours here. I, I know, I think some opportunities may have passed. I, I don't know that we should be paving over what we know are problematic issues with stormwater and some other issues there, so I, I just, I can't in good faith vote on this without at least bringing that up and see where the board stands on it.
Anything I will say is still technically they could do that regardless, it's just it'll be daylight hours. And I agree in theory with everything you say. I just worry about people's safety out there working. I do think we as a township need to push back on the issues that have been discussed previously pertaining to the type of work done out there and, uh, maybe the efficiencies and such.
Yeah, I don't know, um, JJ, at this point, you know, I don't know how far they are, if it's just base, right, or you know?
Yeah, so the, the sub base has been, uh, proof rolled. Um, they're, they're ready to, well, they will be ready on Sunday to play their base course. Um, I would also, thank you for, uh, looping me in the conversation. I would also like to state that if there is any night work or weekend work, there is no guarantee that HRG would be there on site. We would try and make every effort to be there, but no guarantee for off hour work.
Got it.
Well, and it doesn't seem like even when we do have an inspector there, there was allegations that there was no communication. Um, I, I think before, we need to, uh, maybe try to get this addressed before there's any kind of paving concerns we have. Cause it's going to create another layer of pushback if that's done and there needs to be any correction. Cause it, I mean, I publicly said, I think it's in the best interest of the township, township ultimately. If we have ownership of that portion down to Frye Drive and Frye Drive, that intersection eastbound, to give a second point of access for those on hemp that need to get to the pike in the event of either a, uh, road closure due to a fire accident, some sort of incident like that or construction that, you know, we're, we're, we're leaning, we pushed connectivity and here we are. We need to follow through on that.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against this. I feel like it's the only recourse I have and I don't want to also now give them more opportunity to not have inspection, inspections on site. They've, they've ignored our feedback, our reports. We've taken pictures just so the public knows cracked stormwater pipes that were above ground. They may very well be in the ground. So I can't in good faith support doing them a favor here and then furthermore, maybe accepting this road that our specs, for example, call, I understand twelve inch stone for sewer or for stormwater. They put in six just for a flavor of what we were dealing with there. Ignored our calls, our emails, our texts. Um, so I feel like this is the only recourse I have is to vote against this, so that's what I plan to do.
Sean, I have a question. If that plan I had asked and at that stage, there was not much support on the board. If, um, what recourse do we have? With that being, when the plan is being private, ultimately, I know that they are, they do not have to, to build the township spec. But then we don't not have to accept that they would like to dedicate that to the township, however, with the situation being the township might have a desire. I mean, what, what options do we have?
Right, that dedication would be, um, discretionary for the, for the board, so, um, you'd have whatever, whatever leverage that is, if they, if they're desperate to, to have it dedicated. Um, and you want to require them to reconstruct it to spec before you'll take it, uh, take it by dedication, you could require them to do that.
The problem is, I don't know, they, they, this stage do not care if it's dedicated, however we do. Um, this was my point in the beginning, it should have been hammered out back then. Cause now we create this issue where I think they have leverage because of that.
Did, did, did they not, did they meet the plan specs? We have to have, we have to have recourse here.
Well, it's like Walden's not built, those streets aren't built to township spec because it's private and we, it just means that we don't have an obligation and, see, they, they can play that card.
Regarding the, the sub base itself, uh, the township specifications align with PennDOT regarding depth of stone for structure. So on that note, they do not meet plan specs. Regarding pipe material, I'd have to do some more digging into PennDOT specifications for that.
Can you, can you clarify your first comment JJ?
Yeah, so, uh, you mentioned, uh, that the, uh, and previously your comment was that the depth of stone, uh, that they installed six inches instead of twelve inches. Uh, township specifications and PennDOT specifications both call for twelve inches of stone.
Okay.
Underneath, uh, storms, storm structures.
And they've laid six.
Correct.
So they're in violation of township specifications?
And PennDOT, correct.
So that should be a stop work order tomorrow, right?
That would be up to township jurisdiction's decisions.
Okay.
But we should have stopped work back when I first said that we have an issue because now we've allowed them to progress, there's curb in. I, you know, and the other.
You should see the curb.
Yeah, the other portion of that is, um, the fact that with us, if they claim this is going to be a private road, does not technically have to meet township specification. They can claim, right? So what recourse do we have?
Not take the road.
But, yeah, you understand that. I, I think it's to the best interest of the township if we do it. I want to know what choices we have. We, we've allowed this to keep going. This is just like a problem we allowed to keep growing.
I don't think that's fair. I, staff has reached out on multiple occasions.
But we should have stopped work back then if we were going to, and say, look, our desire is to take this over, it needs to be spec. We're not solely, you know.
Before, before we jump into discussion that, that might be used against us in, in, uh, a violation action, why don't, why don't we just going to take this, um, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll review it with staff and, and see what we can do to, to ensure that the, every, everything's built to spec or, or rebuilt to spec.
Yeah, I, I think it's our interest to have it. I, I agree totally with Carl. I just feel this has been left go to the point where they, they're going to claim we progressed this far, nothing's been done.
Yeah, that's, that's, I understand.
Yeah.
I would move to deny the extended work hours.
I would, I would second that.
Is a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, if any, that motion carries. Five D was subdivision waiver, um. Yeah, go ahead Randy, if you had questions on that.
Sean, or hold on, the, the agenda item is just strictly the night hours that was in there, right? Nothing more.
That is correct. It was working outside the hours. I'll just let them know that they have to work within the township hours.
Duncan, go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, I, I was just curious about this waiver and, uh, in addition to it, if there's any precedent for this waiver, uh, how this waiver occurred and, uh, who, who asked for the subdivision, uh, and is, uh, the second part of this is, uh, and we see in other portions of this consent agenda, the actual numbers and costs, uh, which may make my question, you know, insignificant, uh, but there's, uh, no mention of what the applications fees were, what the professional fees are or the, uh, escrow and, and, uh, I would assume the professional fees would be legal and engineering.
Laura, do you want to comment on that?
Yes, Randy. So, um, what happened in this situation? This is related to the Radaba Farm Preservation of the two farms. Um, we started that out with, uh, working with Cumberland County in partnership to preserve those farms. Um, as part of the Cumberland County Preservation Process, any farms that are more than a single parcel are automatically consolidated into a single farm parcel. That's done through the county program. There's no charge to the landowner, no charge to the township. When we were preserving with the county and the Radaba Farms, that's what was going to happen. That was what was slated to happen. Now that the county is no longer involved in that preservation, the township has to take that on ourselves to consolidate these lots. So right now there are five parcels making up two farm properties. They will be consolidated through the subdivision plan into two parcels. One in Green Hill Road and the other at North Locust Point Road. So that's what's happening in the subdivision, excuse me, in the subdivision plan. So typically there's a survey done whenever we preserve farms. And so the surveyor simply did a subdivision plan as well to reconsolidate or reconfigure these lots. So that's what the waiver is for. Um, the waiver, uh, staff was estimating it would be between nine hundred and eighteen hundred dollars is what it would typically cost for this amount of consolidation. So that's what I'm asking to be waived.
Nine hundred to eighteen hundred in, in application fees?
Application fees, escrow, um, any fees, total, total between nine hundred dollars and eighteen hundred dollars. It would depend on the amount of staff review on the plan is why there's a range of figures for that. So this is all in to get the Radaba Farms preserved, which we are hoping will settle in December. This is a part of it, an important step in that process. And, um, just I'll refer back to back in June of twenty twenty five at the board meeting. I gave a statement explaining why we were no longer working in partnership with the county on the Radaba Preservation. You can refer back to that statement, June board meeting, um, I believe it was the twenty fifth. Yes, June twenty fifth board meeting, there's a statement that explains that.
That's in the minutes.
That is attached to the minutes.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Look for a motion on five D.
Motion to approve.
Nancy moved, is there a second?
Second.
Laura, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, if any, that motion carries.
Before we go further, Sean, I have a question pertaining to the item, uh, five B that, um, we voted on. Do we, do we have the legal authority to do a stop work order up there?
Uh, I'm, I'm going to, I'll, I'll work with staff to see what the facts are around that before I have an opinion on it.
That we have leverage due to the timing of the year to get their attention. If we have the legal ability, maybe we need to reach out and touch someone.
Right.
You know.
All right, understand, yeah.
Next is public hearing ASA application. I'll turn the meeting over to Solicitor Schultz to begin the public hearing.
This is an app, app, application under the, uh, agricultural security area law, um, to add to the township's agricultural security area property on North Old Stonehouse Road. Doesn't have a, a, a property, an address number. Um, it's parcel number thirty eight, zero eight, zero five, seven, one, zero, one, nine. Um, it's part of the record. We will include the application for the addition itself. Um, the ASA Advisory Committee Review Report. Uh, the, the memorandum, uh, prepared by Supervisor Brown. The Cumberland County Review Report and the soils, soils report. And then I'm going to, um, pass it over to Supervisor Brown to go over the, the factors that are required, uh, under, under the law.
Okay, thank you. Uh, when an agricultural security area application is received, it's about a three month, three month process leading up to a hearing like this one. ASA law requires notification of the application be placed in the newspaper in public locations throughout the township, as well as on the property being considered. All of these notifications have been completed in the case of the Klingler Farm. We have, uh, the farm parcel pulled up on the, on the screen. You can see off of North Old Stonehouse Road, the reason there is no, um, property, there's no number is because it's currently vacant, uh, vacant farmed lot. Three recommending bodies are required to review the application. The Township Planning Commission, the Township Agricultural Security Area Advisory Committee and the County Planning Commission. All three of these bodies reviewed the Klingler ASA application and all recommended that the Klingler Farm be added to the township's agricultural security area. Proposals for addition to the, to an ASA must have a minimum of ten acres or must have an anticipated yearly gross income of at least two thousand dollars. The Klingler Farm has a total of thirty four point four six six acres. Other factors to be considered when evaluating a farm property for admission into an agricultural security area. Soil quality, more than ninety percent of the soils on the Klingler Farm are class one through four soils, which are conducive to agriculture. Viable agricultural land, this farm parcel is currently planted in soybeans and generally rotates every other year between corn and soybeans. Zoning, the parcel is zoned rural residential. Agriculture, agricultural operation are permitted uses. The Township Comprehensive Plan, the parcel is located within the agriculture area of Silver Spring Township's future land use map. The County Comprehensive Plan, the parcel is in the rural character area of the Cumberland County twenty twenty four Comprehensive Plan future land use map where agricultural use is anticipated. In short, the Klingler Farm meets agricultural security area law criteria for acceptance into Silver Spring Township's ASA. One other important note, the Klingler Farm was preserved on July first, twenty twenty five through Lancaster Farmland Trust and the Silver Spring. through Lancaster Farmland Trust and the Silver Spring Township Land Preservation Program.
Does the board have any questions about the application? I see none. Is there any public comment on this? If you could step up to the podium and we'll we'll need your your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Mary Shrim.
You you should be able to pull it down. Yeah, there you go.
Mary Shrim. We live um, at Michael's property right next to Klinger's. And we had been at the last meeting because we have a property dispute, a boundary law. So uh, we had brought that to their attention because literally when the land trust did their um, survey, they literally put a, I'll say a nail right into our property at forty-five. We own forty-three and forty-five. Forty-five is adjacent to the Kingers. We were never told anything about that until one day I went out and saw a nail with this pink circle driven right onto the driveway and they're stating that that is part of the Klinger land. And it, you know, goes straight back. So we're disputing that because that cuts off our access to our yard on forty-five. And that property, which we had bought two years ago, was owned by the previous owner, who we know for like forty years. And we had helped them take care of the the boundaries because there's like a a fence row and all that. So we were disputing the the survey because we lose land. And, you know, we paid tax on this too. And when we bought the land, there was never any mention by anybody that there was a dispute. So we're not sure how you proceed with this.
So let me let me try to answer some of that because I've discussed this a bit with the the Shrimps before. Um, the the survey uh, has nothing to do with the 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 ASA application. Um, ASA application just includes this parcel. If at some point you resolve that dispute and part of the property um, is determined um, to to be yours and not theirs, if there's some boundary issue there, that would just be corrected at a later point under the under the ASA. Um, so it doesn't affect your property to the extent that you still have a right to, if you have a an issue over where the boundary should be, you can resolve that between between the parties or through the courts if need be.
Uh, we've tried to. We can't even get a hold of them. So we were told to make it public that there there's um, question about that.
But that that's not a factor under the the statute and what we're doing here tonight. So it's not relevant to what we're doing here tonight. Um, your your boundary issue is something you'd need to you need to take up with with the with the Kingers.
So how does that affect like anything future when someone wants to put uh, land into the preservation? Shouldn't you be notified, like where the boundaries are beforehand?
Say for instance, say for instance, we have a car and we pull it onto our driveway, which is on that land.
Okay.
The car is not an agricultural car or anything to do with agriculture and it um, doesn't move. Someone come by and citations and gives us it because we uh, are in somebody else's land that's preserved and there's a uh, lien on our house then because we didn't move it.
Let me let me just, again, this this is an application for the inclusion of the property into the agricultural security area. The boundary dispute's not a not a factor in that. So if you have comment that's that's relevant to whether this property meets the requirements of the law, that's that's what we're looking for here tonight. And the boundary dispute's not not one of those factors. So do you have something that addresses one of the factors that that Supervisor Brown outlined? Then that that would be something that should be on the record tonight.
Sean, I have a question. Um, adverse possession, when somebody uses something for that long, they would be entitled to legally ask for adverse possession or that if the if it included being on the other property, correct?
Yeah, there there are a number of factors to adverse possession. So I'm not I'm not going to jump in.
No, I'm saying that's a possibility they could pursue, maybe.
Right, that's they 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 should get legal counsel to determine their rights.
Okay, so we're, that's why we're here doing a property dispute is because we have adverse possession.
Right, but Mr. Mr. Shrim.
Forty-three and forty-five.
Mr. Shrim, that's that's not the purpose of this hearing tonight.
So who takes care of the trees that fall on my house?
That's not the purpose of this hearing tonight, Mr. Shrim.
It's the ag security area though. Or do I have to go sue someone now because the trees I was taking care of aren't mine?
That's a that's a private property dispute between would be a private property dispute dispute between you and the and the Kingers.
So that has nothing to do with the township ever?
Trees falling from one private property to another private property.
There's boundary disputes.
No, that the township has, sorry, the township has nothing to do with private boundary disputes.
Okay, got you.
So you're saying that all our efforts here tonight are a waste of time? Or we're making it public that it's not a good thing that you put something in the ag security area and you don't have the boundaries corrected yet?
That we don't have evidence that there, that's not a factor under the law.
We've just given you evidence that we've taken care of the property for thirty years.
Those are statements that you made. And again, the private boundary dispute is not something that we deal with here. That we're here to deal with the factors under the agricultural security area law.
I'm still confused.
Is there any other public comment?
That par for twenty-three Ashbrook Drive, just a uninvolved party to this, this it sounds like it's very unfair that you can't, you can't um, put it something in a property in a program that you you don't legally own. That it seemed like they would have a right to settle that before you actually put property you don't own to a agricultural trust. An independent comment. So so you can do what you want, but I can't see how you can legally take someone's property and say that's not not your problem.
Is there any other public comment? Yeah, I'll just clarify that there's a there's a deed that the Kingers own the own the property. Um, whether there's a boundary dispute, again, not a factor under under what we're we're doing here tonight.
Was the survey, I'm just curious, done under for the ASA or for the preservation? Maybe Laura would know.
Survey was done um, for the preservation, but there was always a also a previous survey done years before that showed the same encroachment. And when when the survey was done through Lancaster Farmland Trust, um, Mr. Jeb Musser, our representative with Lancaster Farmland Trust, did contact the Shrimps to let them know there was a very minor encroachment of their property. Um, so that was discussed with them.
If the, not even in this case specifically, and I know I'm off track, but I just have a question since we're on the topic. If a neighboring property does successfully dispute maybe with their own survey and however that process would work, would the land trust in this case adjust the, you know, the easement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, if there is some sort of change to the deed.
Yeah.
Um, yes, that would be reflected in their easement. Um, because it would follow the deed. It's it's attached to the parcel itself.
That's correct. Okay.
But the deed, the deed states a set amount of ground, so I mean, to me, that would be a legal claim to that amount of ground.
Um, I I don't want to prolong that. Why why don't we get through this hearing so that we don't have a longer transcript and then we we can discuss this and I'll circle back to it.
I approach the board again. So this is a map given by Silver Springs, and I'll pass it to the board here. It's approximately seventy-five feet of ground. It's not like a little dispute, okay? And every time we come here, it seems like we'll pu- pass it on to the next meeting, okay? And that's why we're in this situation. I wrote a letter and put it in the box a month beforehand. I was told by the secretaries and staff that it would be taken into consideration tonight. And then I was called back and said, no, you put it in too late. Said, well, the secretary and staff and everyone said it was okay to put it in. Uh, it was September twentieth or twenty-second or something like that. That letter is not being considered tonight because it was too late. And everything we've done so far is too late or not considered at the time we're here. So I would like to have it either pushed to another date so we really can talk about it or or give us a chance to show you. So the original survey done in nineteen eighty-three gives us that fence row. The fence row has hundred-year-old trees on it. Um, we've taken care of property, chased hunters away, chased kids with booze and and bottles and all kinds of litter. We've cut trees down that fallen on their property, fallen on the Russ property who lived there too and they were older, couldn't take care of it. I took the trees away from their property. Um, numerous other things we do to the property, putting, you know, no trespassing signs up and things like that. We've taken care of the property the whole time. Um, we have a bullet hole in our house, okay? We had to, we have cats. Two cats were killed by guns, okay? This is not like something that you just like pass along to the next time. We have police officers there chasing hunters away two two or three times.
Mr. 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 Shrim, Mr. Shrim, we're we're here for an ASA application. So you you free to be heard heard out in public comment right now, but we have a hearing with relevant comment that we we need to hear tonight. So.
I believe this is relevant, sir, because it's my property.
Okay, Mr. Shrim, it's not relevant. It's not relevant, please, sir. It's not relevant to the hearing that we're having right now. If you want to be heard during public comment, absolutely. But let's let's work through this hearing and then and then you can be be heard.
I'm sorry, I thought this was public comment.
It's public comment for the ASA application. Yep. And then we can circle back to the board's questions about the the issues Mr. Shrim raised once we get, once we get through the hearing. Okay. Is there any other public comment on the ASA application? Okay. Um, we've heard all the the factors uh, that that Supervisor Brown has outlined. Um, you have the reports and and now I return it to the chair for consideration of a motion.
Thanks. And with that, the public hearing is closed. Is the board willing to make a motion?
I will make a motion uh, to approve the modification of the agricultural security security area to add the Klinger property at North Old Stone House Road, Carla LPA, parcel three eight oh eight oh five seven one dash oh one nine, and to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty 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 twenty-five dash twenty-six.
You have a motion on the table? Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if any, that motion carries. Any other comment from the board on that at this point?
Sean, would you be able to give them direction? I mean, they could get an attorney or they could, I mean.
I've I've spoken to Mr. 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 Shrim by by phone uh, previously and um, yeah, so it's a it's a it's a private dispute over over boundary. Um, municipalities don't get involved in private disputes over over boundaries.
And I I will add, I've I've spoken with the Shrimps various times. Um, I did send you guys an email, I believe it was yesterday, that I heard from John Klinger. And he did call and he said he left you a text message, Michael. Um, he said he called, he left a text message two weeks ago, but he is trying to reach you as well. He would like to talk to you. So um, yeah, I've been trying to facilitate that because that's ultimately the best outcome would be as neighbors, that you resolve this. Um, so but as Sean said, it's it's a civil matter. It's not really something we can do at the township and um, not with the ASA. And and thank you also for submitting your own ASA application, which will be considered over the next three months as well. We'll be working through that with you. But um, yes, I I'm hoping that you can talk with John and work things out.
Okay, thanks, Laura. We'll move to subdivision and land development then. First is aqua treatment systems. This is a waiver request and a construction modification and a financial security adjustment. Is there a representative this evening, Mr. Webrik?
Dave Webrik, Advantage Engineering Services, here for Mr. Philson this evening. Uh, he 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 started his building at one ninety-four Hemp Road and uh, he had made some field changes without getting uh, prior approval from the township staff or the township engineer. And now he's trying to uh, make things right and everything he needs. He he added two storm sewer runs that weren't on the original plan I did. One was uh, he put an inlet and a eighteen-inch pipe from Texco Road onto his property. It it ultimately goes into his stormwater pond for his new building. And then on the south side of his building was supposed to be a swale I had draining the off-site water into his pond. He doesn't like the way it looks. So he wants to enclose it with a pipe. So we uh, started to put a twenty-four-inch pipe in and the township said that's not on the plan. Yeah, you need to get it reaproved. So I submitted the plans and stormwater calculations to H R G and I think they're fine. But he needs to update his improvement guarantee, which is primarily while we're here tonight. Uh, because uh, there's an additional forty thousand dollars needed to be added to his current improvement guarantee to make sure that 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 is enough to cover the the work that wasn't on the plan. And then the other part of this evening is he's asking for a waiver from the subdivision land development ordinance as it applies to the parking lot in the front of his new building. Uh, the approved plan had fifty-four spaces. Uh, but your ordinance says if you have fifty or more spaces, five percent of the interior of the parking lot has to be landscaped. Uh, he doesn't want to put interior landscape islands. He says it results in a real pain uh, when it's time to plow. Uh, and he could get around it just by, instead of striping it the minimum nine and a half foot wide, if he made them like ten or eleven or even twelve, whatever. He'd end up with forty-nine spaces. And so he wouldn't have to do the five percent, even though if it's the same area of McCattam, I think we should change our ordinance to base it on total square footage of the parking lot and not the number of spaces, but that's for another day. Um, other than that, that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions if I know the answers.
JJ, I have a question for you. That twenty-four-inch pipe, what's that do in relation to the amount of area he has on site to to accommodate infiltration of stormwater? Is that going to do anything?
No, that shouldn't affect infiltration. Uh, all the infiltration rates were assumed to be in the basin. So I mean, theoretically, a swale would have some infiltration, but the twenty-four-inch storm sewer shouldn't affect the volume control requirements.
And I I personally know firsthand about the inlet. The inlet actually did the township a favor because it eliminated an open ditch along the road.
Yep.
He did put an inlet top on it. If anything, that improved that. I don't have a problem with that.
Yep, no problem with that.
My main concern would be, um, you know, putting the pipe in, like the the was the swale meant to accommodate rainwater from the roof or what was the ultimate purpose of the swale?
Yeah, I believe it was mainly just for conveyance from any impervious area uh, that would drain to that area on site. That could be roof drains. That was a portion of the parking lot. Um, but now it would just be uh, collected at the head wall of the the pipe run and then directed towards the basin.
The stormwater basin is to the rear of the property then?
Correct.
Okay.
There's about, there's a couple acres offsite on the other side of Hemp Road that drains on the Robb's property. And that primarily conveys it around his building and into his pond.
Other comments, questions from the board? JJ, anything from H R G?
Um, personally regarding the interior landscaping uh, waiver request, I personally don't see a hardship that was proven through the construction activities that would warrant a a approval of the waiver. Um, however, ultimately that would be up to board decision on how they want would want to move forward.
Okay.
Do you have a pro- you don't have a problem with any of the other ones?
No, all the other construction modifications, we've uh, gone through the review procedure and we're we're okay with.
Yeah, I I like it better when people come in beforehand than the as for forgiveness.
As for permission or forgiveness, yeah.
I'm just being honest. That that makes it harder.
I agree.
So there's what, three modifications we're approving, three waivers?
I believe it's just one waiver and then everything else would be uh, included in the construction modification. I believe it's just one waiver and then everything else would be, uh, included in the construction modification request.
In, including the improvement guarantee?
Uh, well, that would be a separate.
Separate.
Yeah.
No more discussion on the landscape? I think that's the only one up for, up for debate, it sounds like.
Is he, is he required to have fifty-four spaces by?
Nah, he has about eight. He can give, he can give about eight spaces away.
I believe there is, uh, additional or surplus of parking proposed for the square footage of the building.
What about what Dave proposed if they make the parking spaces, what, six inches wider?
Or, nah, it was actually more like nine or nine, nine on the one side, like eleven on the other, and then you'd end up with forty-nine spaces. So I wouldn't need to put any five percent of green in it. I mean, it's a loophole. I mean, that, it is. And it's not the only loophole in our, our ordinance, but.
Yeah, but you pick your poison. I mean, to me, like, if he wants fifty-four spaces and he's bent on it, put the interior in and if he wants to do the, make it, make them down to forty-nine, we can let it the way it is.
I'm not sure what you just said.
I'm just saying, like, he could have the same amount of impervious coverage there. It's a matter of how he stripes it to get.
Yeah, and, and I don't think that was the intent of the.
I know, but I'm just saying, if he, he wants forty-nine spaces, he can leave it the way it is, and if he wants fifty-four spaces, he can put the interior in.
Okay, that's fair enough. That's, I think that's, uh, that's very fair.
Yeah.
You are, are you with that, JJ?
I mean, I think it goes back to the intent of the ordinance, right?
I, I know where you're coming from. I'm just saying.
Ultimately, it's board supervisor's decision on how you'd want to proceed.
I, cause I could make a motion if nobody else has any questions.
Go ahead, Dave.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we deny the waiver requests for, uh, or approve the waiver request for interior landscaping with the stipulation that no more than forty-nine spaces are to be incorporated into the, uh, parking lot as it's presently constructed and that we approve the construction modification.
Take them one at a time, Dave.
Okay.
So we have a motion for the waiver, right?
I'll second it.
Well, that's fine if you want to second. I just feel like we're encouraging the loophole by the way that motion was made. So I just want to be, be clear, that's what you intended.
What we need to do is change our ordinance.
Okay, well, that's not the night.
But we keep saying that. I mean, we keep playing that years and years goodbye and then somebody comes in and it's a new situation. We, if we only would have changed the ordinance, we could have prevented that.
I agree with you, Carl, but like me, where it's at, we just limit the number of spaces and, um.
His intention is more spaces, so I can't figure out why.
No, no, the spaces aren't important to him. It's, it's just mainly an issue about aesthetics. And I, and I, I used to hear complaints when I would work on, uh, uh, plans for car dealerships about Silver Spring Township because interior landscaping, because that attracts birds and bird soil cars, but that was part, part of the ordinance if you wanted to develop in Silver Spring Township. And it's the same thing here. It does hamper par, it does hamper snow plowing.
And Rod, and Rod takes his cars very seriously, so he doesn't want.
But on the other hand, I mean, we completely skipped over all the, the reasons for that and we're, we're going to the point one percent of the, right? So I don't want to debate that. I don't know. I, I don't know why they were put in there. I'm sure there was good reasons, but.
You can't write an ordinance and cover every possible situation. You just have to.
The intent, Carl, is like when you have like a Wegmans or a bigger facility, you get the interior green, you know, the trees for shade, whatever. I mean, this is a smaller lot. I, I agree with what you say, that I do think there's the loophole if it's fifty spaces, if he makes it forty-nine, then, you know, am I a fan like coming and ask for forgiveness? No.
Okay.
And also just for clarity, uh, the minimum parking space requirement for interior landscaping is twenty-five spaces, not fifty.
Oh, I thought it was fifty.
The, the proposed, uh, parking space is twenty-nine instead of forty-nine, so I think that's where the confusion was, but.
So we're even further apart?
Well, the, the proposed parking lot onsite right now has twenty-nine spaces. The requirement kicks in with twenty-five spaces, so there's fours additional spaces.
I'm sorry, I'm, I said fifty.
Yeah.
I meant twenty-five.
Yep.
Sorry. It's, it's, he has twenty-nine right now. He needs to get to twenty-four, not to do interior landscaping. That's what I meant.
So the, the size of the lot is correct for twenty-nine. We, you need to get it to twenty-four. I'll retract my motion. I'll remake my motion to say that we approve the waiver for interior landscaping with the fact that the lot cannot have more than twenty-four parking spaces.
Well, I, I think on that note, if the.
It's not required.
Yeah, then it wouldn't, interior landscaping wouldn't be required if there's.
Dover that if he does the twenty-nine.
Well, yes, well, I, I think where it would come in, if you would like twenty-four spaces, then interior landscaping wouldn't be required and therefore a waiver wouldn't be required.
Ah.
Yes.
Right, yeah, so I think the rule would be to deny the waiver.
Just paint the, it's not going to hurt anybody. It's not a big deal. It, it, he'll just have to stripe them wider, you know?
But then if we don't, they can go back and put twenty-nine spaces in at a later date. If we put it contingent on twenty-four, he has twenty-four spaces.
Nah, he can't.
Yeah, once the, once they would add the spaces, they'd have to do the interior landscaping.
Correct.
Ask for forgiveness, you know what I mean? It'll happen some when they seal coat the lot or whatever. I'm just saying if we limit, cap it at twenty-four, that prevents that and.
It's, it's already capped. The ordinance already caps it. That's why you don't, you don't need the, the waiver in that, in that case.
I just figured something in writing, uh, all right, I'll, I'll make a motion that I'll retract that and I'll make a motion that we deny the waiver.
Do you have a motion for denial? Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if any, that motion carries. Dave, I think you were going to move on the construction mods?
Yeah, um, I, I don't have a problem with it if we re, approve the construction modification as requested.
Motion on the table on the construction mod, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if any, that motion carries. And the financial security adjustment? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Nancy, move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Harry, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if any, that motion carries. Thank you, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Next is Silver Spring Cost CSG one LLC. This is a conditional use application. Do we have a representative, sir?
Good evening. Dean Reynosa from MPL Law Firm on behalf of the applicant. I was told by Solicitor Schultz I probably do not need to be here. Our client just wanted representation. I understand this is just, uh, pro forma to schedule a conditional use hearing for December seventeenth and therefore referring to Planning Commission, I think, December fourth. I'm happy to take any questions if there are any, but I'm sure that's all going to happen at the conditional use hearing.
Certainly apply, supplied us with a lot of literature. Thank you for that.
Sure.
Questions or comments on that? I'll look for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve forwarding the application to allow for structure mounted solar farm in the, in the light industrial zone by conditional use. Section forty-four permits a structure mounted solar farm. Section eight oh four must be met to obtain a conditional use approval to for. Doesn't make any sense. Forward to the Township Planning Commission, Cumberland County Planning Commission, Planning Department and Township Engineer for their review and recommendation to establish a public hearing date of December seventeenth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM for testimony.
That's probably the longest run-on sentence you've read in a while, Nancy.
It gets to the point, right?
Yeah, we got it. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Dave, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if any, that motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming.
New businesses, land preservation program, purchase and preparation of conservation easements. This is, uh, the Adams property. Laura, were you going to brief on this?
Yes, yes. Um, I believe Scott is pulling up the, uh, parcels on the map. This is a farm that is located off of Trundle Road. Wait till that comes up. Or I can just go ahead and talk about it and then it'll come up. This is a farm off Trundle Road comprised of two parcels. It totals about eighty acres. Uh, we're preserving this pro, farm in partnership with the county. Uh, the easement payment amount listed in the first, there it is. Um, so there's two parcels right now. It has access off of North Locust Point Road as well as off of Trundle. Uh, like I said, about eighty acres. Um, we're preserving in partnership with the county. I wanted to make sure I pointed out that the, uh, first, um, motion for the easement value on the property is actually much less than the full easement value because we are doing this in partnership. The township is only paying a portion of the easement value payment. Cumberland County is picking up the rest of that amount. If you'll notice in the motions also list a contingency amount. That is because the property has not been surveyed yet. That will happen in the next month, so there's contingency in case those acres change. Through the county process, as we were talking about earlier with the, uh, Rataba properties, these two parcels will automatically at settlement become one parcel. Uh, so in future it will be just a single parcel and we're hoping to settle this property in December of this year. That's all I wanted to say, Carl.
Thanks, uh, Laura. Comments or questions? We can take a motion on new business one A and B if the board's comfortable?
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the Adams Farm, uh, item A and, well, item one and two, um, to approve the easement value and the incentive amount.
There's a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Nancy, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if any, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Engineering update, JJ.
Thank you. Uh, first thing on the engineer update is the Cos Road British inspection. We actually just had that inspection finalized today, so I'm not sure if it was forwarded to board supervisors prior to the meeting. But, um, just a quick summary of what the, uh, inspection noted for the Northern Culvert on Cos Road. There were priority one, uh, in, priority one maintenance recommendations for that bridge. Um, the reason for this is undermining of the abutments within the bridge as well as, uh, a fracture of the left wing wall on the bridge itself. So what a priority one maintenance recommendations mean is that the township is required to develop a plan of action within the next seven days on how to address those, um, maintenance activities. And a, a plan of action can be a multitude of things. Um, it could be, uh, planning to repair the, uh, deficiencies. Uh, it could also be making a plan to replace the bridge itself. So I, I think today, what I would like to, to open up to the board is how you would like us to respond to those priority one deficiencies and write the plan of action. Would we like to go with the, uh, the replacement route? Would we like to go with the, uh, the repair route? Um, and then we would be able to identify what we would need to do on the plan of action. So I'll open that to a discussion for the board.
I'd say reply that we're replacing because we know that, that, that's the worst of the two bridges. It needs to be replaced. We're throwing good money at a bad cause by putting money into that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we budgeted for replacement of both.
We're dead. Sounds good. So whether we're replacing on alignment, off alignment, we can write the plan of action pretty vague that it will be, it's planning to be replaced in the next couple of years, uh, for Cos Road.
Do you imagine that's signed prior to replacement? I'm guessing is that part of the inspection report?
The plan of action, is that what you're?
A reduction on the weight there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just on that, we initiated that conversation today with the Public Works team, got with Sean in an email to say, hey, we're going to have to post this similar to what we did with Hemp Bridge. We'll have to post it. It'll have to be inspected each year until we actually replace it. And if needs to be adjusted, we'll continually update that ordinance, so.
JJ, I said signed, I meant posted.
Yeah, no worries. Yeah, we were, we were jumping topics. Yeah, thank you, thank you for filling in.
What's it going to be lowered to? Cause my concern is.
It has to be lowered.
Nineteen tons, except for combinations, can be twenty-nine tons.
Twenty.
That's going to impact, uh, Mr. Sellers' farm there. He utilizes that. Can we do a bridge on a bridge? Like, can we do any other sort of remediation there that's not an extreme cost to? Because the other end of the road's posted no trucks from the Cos Road, the old IBM site over to that point. I know it's a local delivery, but is there any course of action? The undermining, is it due to the fact that the pipe is probably missing on the bottom?
Yeah, so the undermining is caused within the structure by, um, the, the subbase under the abutments because it's, you know, a concrete bridge with steel beam.
Scouring.
Yeah, scouring underneath.
How much does his tractor weigh?
Well, they're, they're eighty thousand, but they get exemptions to be, I don't know if he runs any trucks back here loaded with grain. It's, it's more. I think maybe we need to have a discussion and any reason I say that twofold is he, he is willing to work with us on the right of way over at the S Turns and he works with us in a multitude of ways for the township. Can we maybe have a, a phone conversation with him? JJ, and find out what thinks maximum weight he navigates back to the farm to, to see how it, it is, um.
I think we can definitely have a conversation with Andy.
Yeah.
I, I don't, uh, kick it back over to JJ on the engineering side, but if we're required to drop that weight to a certain amount due to the engineering, we have to do that.
I understand that, but there's things you can do to that in the interim. To help with the, the weight restriction, I know that you can put something on top of it that makes that span.
Yeah.
Can you find out, I can forward his.
Yeah, yeah, I can talk with our bridge team and see if there are any, you know, temporary remediation measures other than the ones identified in the report that could, could help with it. But, I mean, with bridges, I'm always, you know, hesitant to, uh, try and mess with any restrictions because of the, the public safety involved in it, but I can, I can talk with our team.
Yeah, it's only, he's the only person back there that technically legally should be using that road that, that's a truck from that point back other than maybe occasional harvest, which he, he farms the cost farm there as wells, but I, you know, like, see, see what, it's imperative. I know he keeps tractors back there and everything. All the, uh, implementation that he has, um, I don't want to impact him. If there's something we can do economically.
Well, maybe he'll offer something that he'll, he'll do to, to work around till we get it resolved.
I would, you know, just have a conversation. I'm not, you know, a fan of spending a lot of money on it because of the fact that it's coming out, but I, in the same token, he's done an awful lot for us, like with, over there, he, you know, he could be more adversarial with the.
Yeah.
Plan that we want to do over on Texco.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll reach out and coordinate with them, see if there's any alternative measures that we can take. Okay, sounds good. But yes, in regarding to the, the posting of the signage, um, as Tyler mentioned, Public Works has already ordered the signs, so they should be posted, uh, if not later this week, early next week. And then hopefully on the November board supervisors meeting, we will have a draft ordinance for the, the weight limit restrictions. Any questions on, on Cos Road, Cos Road Bridge inspection?
Thanks Tyler and JJ on that.
Yep, no worries. Uh, Ray kind of stole my thunder earlier about Hidden Creek pickleball courts. Um, as you saw with some of the pictures, uh, construction's moving along there. I did want to note that regarding the painting, um, the ambient and, uh, ambient air temperature and the pavement temperature needs to be fifty degrees or higher for twenty-four hours for the, the paint to dry on that surface. And we're getting, you know, close to the season where at nighttime it's not above fifty degrees. We have talked with the contractor and they do have heating, overnight heating methods. So if we don't get a good weather day within the next week or so, we may have to explore those options. But I believe in talking with Tyler and the contractor, there is still some. But I believe in talking with Tyler and the contractor, there is still some budget left in the grant that was received for the uh, pickleball courts that we might be able to just cover it with grant money uh, itself. But uh, more to come on that if we aren't able to get the painting done with the next couple of weeks.
If we wait, it's spring. I mean, how many people have been really used it over winter anyhow?
I was gonna say, do they play in the winter?
I mean, D A weather, right? We've had Januaries where it's been seventy degrees, right? We've had snow, we've had rain, we've had nice weather. I'll tell you this, if it's nice out over the winter, people are not ready.
They're gonna be there.
So I just want a job that's gonna turn out, because if not, that stuff starts to flake when you color code.
Yeah, for sure. And, and that's why we would explore those uh, heating methods if, if needed. And then municipal campus and Paul Winters Park, uh, just informing you guys that both those projects are out to bid right now. Um, we've received some bitter questions, so we've got some good traction on both thumb. And then we'll have a recommendation of award at next meeting.
All right.
Great.
Thanks, J J.
Yep, no worries.
That'll take us to supervisor and staff comments. We'll start on my left, Scott.
So working, okay. Just, um, I know I talked to some of the planning commission members. They were um, thankful for the Joe Ricky uh, tree ceremony down at um, Stony Ridge. So I think we had a really good turnout. So thank you for that on behalf of the planning commission and myself as well. Um, honoring Joe Ricky. And also just to confirm, I know I brought this up that I may be at Chippensburg for an event. I will be at Chippensburg for an event. Doing a mock, mock interviews and um, sharing what uh, I do day to day here for uh, the students at Chippensburg. So just wanna give you an update on that.
Hey, thanks Scott. Well, let it. Amy? Glenn, anything? Tyler?
Yes, I do have something. Uh, if I could just have a minute, please. I know the board knows, uh, many of the staff knows in this month, uh, over the last couple of weeks, I've been notifying all the committees that I get to work with every, every month, every day, um, here with Silver Spring Township. But my last day with the township will be November fourteenth. Uh, I'm sorry, yeah, the fourteenth at Friday. So this will be my last board of supervisors meeting with you guys in attendance. And I just wanted to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to all of you, um, as I prepare for this transition for my own career. It's hard to put into words how much I valued my time here and the relationships. I've been fortunate to work alongside some incredible people here. Individuals who care deeply about the work that we do. About each other and the community that they serve. The collaboration professionalism and support I've experienced here um, has and will always leave a lasting impression on me. We've accomplished many great things, taking on challenges, improving operations and delivering services to this community that make a difference. I will take with me not only the experience I've gained, but also the lessons, friendships and respect that has come from this position. The organization has helped shape the professional than I am today, and I am truly grateful. I wish each of you continued success in the important work that you do every day as elected officials, as staff members and as community members who are involved. Thank you again for the opportunity to be a part of this organization and for the support you've shown me through the years and the confidence that you've instilled in me to run the parking rec department and the public works department for Silver Spring Township. Like I said, I, I am here for another three weeks and uh, I'm a sports guy and I tell Ray this all the time. I'm gonna play every minute of this game for you guys. So anything you guys need over the next three weeks to help with this transition, I'm here to do that for you guys. So um, again, thank you for this uh, just moment to share that with you. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Tyler.
Tyler, I heard what got you the job was when they heard about when it's, if it's a hundred per, ten percent. You say at the interview, it's actually a hundred and thirty because of your math's awful little set.
Exactly. Yep. The math test, I actually passed. Oh, sorry.
Thanks Tyler. Cheryl?
Okay, so it's hard to follow that up. We will miss you Tyler, but we got you for three weeks. So I have the fun announcements. Silver Spring Community Fire Company this Friday is having a trunk or treat from six P M to eight P M. So take your goodie bag out and visit all the trunks. And then um, Monday, October twenty-seventh, uh, the Parks and Rec Department is having a costume crawl down at Stony Ridge Park that will also be from six P M to eight P M. They're gonna have games, uh, DJ, a photo booth and, and much, much more. A costume crawl is kind of similar to a trunk or treat, only they're not gonna be passing candy out of trunks. So I hope to see everybody out at those events.
What date is that?
Uh, the costume crawl is Monday, the twenty-seventh. And the Silver Spring Community Fire Company is this Friday, the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Cheryl. Lieutenant? Chief?
Just one uh, email I received today that was exciting. Uh, the board over the last few years has allowed me to advance order uh, our new police cars for the next year in the budget. You guys permitted that this year as well. Last year, I think was the earliest we ever got a car on the street and that was July. So the next year really isn't much of a year. I think one year it was November by the time we got them. I received an email this morning from the dealership. Uh, we use New Holland and both our cars are scheduled to ship in the end of November. They expect them to be hopefully to the upfitter and on the street by January or February, which would be amazing. And that helps us with the two cars that have advanced miles getting off the street quicker. So my appreciation to the board for permitting us to do that. Still no funds being spent before twenty twenty-six, but uh, many months less of wait and wait and wait. So thank you all.
Thanks, Chief.
And thanks to Tyler for all his work, especially with public works. It's been a, he's been a, a great partner when we have road issues and stuff like that. So really appreciate it. Thank you. Best of luck.
Thanks, Chief. Solicitor Schultz.
I wasn't going to say anything, but now Tyler gave such a heartfelt goodbye for this final meeting. Um, so I feel like I should, should say, you know, my experience with Tyler has been incredible. I wouldn't be surprised if down the, down the road, uh, if he so chooses, he'd, he'd be a municipal manager. You might wanna, you make sure that's something you wanna do before you, you do that, get the right municipality. But uh, incredible taskmaster and everything you, you do, you're always there and, and just from those comments you gave, you know, clear that everything you do comes from the heart. I even heard that little voice crack there, Tyler. So it's, you know, truly incredible, everything, everything you've done here for the township.
Thanks, Sean. Ray?
I'm gonna echo what everybody said. Um, Tyler and I are football people and if you know anything about football, if you're a if you're a center, Tyler was, um, it's really the person who orchestrates everything when you get to the line, who's blocking, what's, who's doing what, what's the play on? Everything has to happen. To me, it epitomizes Tyler and his time here. And um, I have, you and I have had some fun, crazy, hectic, dynamic times. Um, I remember interviewing you down at the pavilion in April of, we were still in a COVID uh, situation. Was a, a great hire. Uh, we could not be any happier in terms of, you know, for you personally and professionally and where you're going. And I, you know, I wanted to publicly say thank you for, for everything you did, Tyler. Um, one last thing I'll share with you. We had about ten to twelve, about ten, twelve people today. We walked the hemp property today with H R G staff and P A Fish and Boat. Was a really, uh, really good, good walk uh, to see the vibrant stream. And I'll call it vibrant. It's, it's a pretty hectic stream over there, very uh, there's a lot of water and a lot of activity. So we're, over the next several months, we'll be coming to the board, sharing some of the ideas we have with it. I, I wanna just compliment all staff and H R G. You know, and Jennifer's been a, is our M S A, our four coordinator. For us to have the relationship, it, it certainly, we had a badon passed by, by uh, Chairman Mockamur. But we've maintained the relationship with P A Fish and Boat and they are very excited to work with us on this project. So I think we should be very proud to have that relationship with them. That they drove almost two hours to come meet us today. So just thanks to everybody here that was at the, the walk. So thank you.
Thanks, Ray. J J, anything else?
Echoing whatever one else said about you, Tyler. It's been great working with you, even for these short past six months, I believe it's now, Ben. But I'm sure we'll, we'll cross paths again uh, in, or another H R G hat will. And uh, Supervisor Mockamur, I hope you uh, crushed your P R at the Chicago Marathon.
Thanks. Laura?
I'm gonna stick with the Tyler topic. I was so sad when I heard that you were leaving and I've already communicated this to Tyler, but you have been fantastic, so reliable. You've been incredibly supportive of the land preservation program in every way that you could be. That celebration was amazing because you had everything set up and you were in charge and it was great. You've been fantastic on the vets committee and on rack. Just working with you has been fantastic. I'm gonna really, really miss you. So thank you for everything.
Thanks, Laura. Nancy?
What's left to say about Tyler? Tyler, truly, you have been a real prince to work with. I mean, you always agree, yes, whatever we ask for, yep, I'll do it. We'll get it done. Never, never do you ever dispute or disagree? And I, I just think that's so commendable. It's not easy to do that sometimes and but, and you bite your tongue and you do, do whatever somebody asks you. But truly, you have been a joy to work with and, and I, one last piece of advice, it's not too late to change your mind.
Thanks, Nancy. Harry?
Tyler. Dave and I had a nice long conversation about you one day and, and uh, Dave said that he was gonna have you do his income tax because you're really good at math. So if the job is still open, Dave will accept. But thank you for what, what you've done for the township and, and I appreciate, I appreciate personally because I know that you've helped me with uh, State Road, putting all the stuff on State Road and stuff for traditions. So I appreciate it and thank you. And um, are you going back to play center at Chippensburg again? Cause Ray said you were a center at Chippensburg. I didn't know if you were going back to play center.
No, my eligibility is long gone.
Well, one can always hope. If, if you use your math, you got a couple more left, right?
Go back for the COVID year.
Dave, Dave will accept you to do his income tax. I'm telling you, it's gonna be a job.
Absolutely. And I expect to get that peanut butter pie before I leave here.
Anytime.
As long as he don't cook it, right?
Um, I wanna thank all the participants tonight for uh, your comments and everything. I know Clarence had a lot to say. And thank you for bringing those things forward and, and Tom from the New Kingston Vision, I wanna thank you for your um, summary of what New Kingston feels that they wanna support. And uh, I wanna thank the uh, staff because the staff really gets everything together for us. So that when we come to the meeting or even before the meeting, we have an idea of what's going on. So I think the staff deserves a, a big round of appreciation because they do a wonderful job. So. Harry, they're actually clapping because you're done. First off, Chief and Lieutenant Jenkins, can uh, you let the officers from Friday night know, maybe give him a attaboy letter in their file or whatever. I guess that would be Butler's platoon and I believe Officer Lindsay was on what, like a traffic detail there. Assistant. And I know um, Lieutenant Jenkins had called me. I know it really wasn't something we should have been doing out there or with normal protocol. However, I think worker safety and you know, just the fact that it needed to be done. They were under a time constraint. I think ultimately people's safety, especially working on the road and those traveling. It was imperative that they were there due to the darkness, you know, illuminating the lagers and also with their lights on to warn those coming in through that they shouldn't be driving at a sensible speed. So I, I respected the fact. I knew that they were busy. They made time and I'm sure, you know, they, they had other things to do to help. You know, the other officers that weren't out there, but I, I appreciate the team effort on that. So if you can pass that on to those verbally and maybe with a little thank you letter, that I'd appreciate it. Also, um, I'll echo what Glenn Hostetler said. I knew Roger Wagner. When he owned, he was part owners in the company that he owned. They did work for me. Stand-up guy, hard worker, humble. He got it done. He was a, I call a public servant. He was involved in the fire company. I knew for a long time. I wasn't sure it was sixty years, but I knew he was in a long time. He wore many hats there and uh, carried the torch for the good of the community. You wouldn't find a better individual than Roger. May he rest in peace. Also Tyler, um, you know, each day you take on new challenges and you move up, you're going up another rung or two on the ladder. Just see how far, you know, your ladder goes in life. You know, there could be another ten rungs on it. You know, each day you learn something new. My dad always told me, you go into work and you don't learn anything new. Then you're not, you know, really applying yourself. So I know you learned a lot with your time here. And uh, you know, take what you learned there and, you know, keep learning. Burrows are set up different and especially that borough being a larger scale. Their operation, you know, you can probably take things from here to improve it, but, but they're, they have their own way and there's gonna be things that you'll have to learn. And uh, I'm sure, you know, you try to innovate. You'll uh, take things there with a fresh mind and try to improve the wheel and make it run a little smoother if possible. So nothing but the best wishes for you. And uh, you know, hopefully you have a long career there and uh, move up the ladder. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Dave. A lot's been said, Tyler. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try my best to, to top it, but I don't know that I can. So, you know, we can hear the passion in your voice. That's one of the best qualities I think you brought to the township. You know, just to use a football analogy too, I think that maybe you didn't score touchdowns as, as a center, but you've certainly moved the ball forward for us, right? On a, in a, in a, in a, exactly. That's true. Yeah. So. But, but in all seriousness, I mean, you've had your, your hands in a lot. You've been touching the ball every play. Can't thank you enough. You've always stepped up, done what needs to be done. I know some of the phone calls you've had to take over the past however many months. You know, so I appreciate everything you've done for us. Um, seen you grow a lot here. I hope you take a lot of, you know, learnings and lessons and that it's a, it's been a mutual relationship. So we're, we're proud of you. Wish you, wish you the best and your family. Yeah, I think uh, that's the gist of what I wanna say. So thank you, Tyler. Thank you for everything you've done for us. J J, it was a three-minute P R, so I'll take it. I don't know if that's crushing the P R, but we'll, we'll, we'll take progress uh, as far as that goes. So. Anyway, thank you all. Uh, as Harry said, appreciate everybody's input and um, joining us this evening. So without anything else, is there any objection to adjournment?
Indeed.
So it'll be, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.